Hello, this is Bonita De Rosa. You are about to listen to The Willis Hour, a segment on Lone Star Internet Radio in which various city officials discuss news and information about the city of Willis. We encourage you to join in the conversation by contacting the city of Willis at (936) You can also visit our website at www.ciwillistx.us for more information. Please enjoy the show.
Good morning. My name is Hector Forst here. I'm the city manager in Willis and with me this morning is Zach Goodlander. Good morning Zach.
Good morning. Happy to be here with you.
Great. We're here to report on the outcome of the meeting of the city council that took place Tuesday night. By the way, the meetings are every third Tuesday starting at 5:30. We had a pretty good agenda last night, so let's get right into it. What was the first item on the citizens' inquiry?
Well, following the normal pledges and invocation, we went to citizens' inquiry. And the item on the agenda for this past meeting, Blile and Associates, our engineering firm through the city, actually presented to the city three pictures in a frame, very nice, of the Willis water tower coming down.
This is, like Zach mentioned, John Blile and his company have been city engineers for a number of years with the city of Willis. They make that presentation of the tower that was actually taken down about a year or so ago because of corrosion and it would have cost more to upkeep than to maintain it eventually. And it was an icon of the city. Zach, as you may know by now, is a historian by heart and we're going to be putting that picture at City Hall. It will be proudly displayed so the citizens can take a look at it. What else?
Well, I think that was about it on the citizens' inquiry. After that, we moved on to the consent agenda, which was just approving minutes from the previous meeting in January, accounts payable. And then we were going to be going over the 2015 traffic stop data and police pursuit reports. However, Chief Noack was actually out.
Chief is in Kerrville at a training and this is something that we usually put on the consent agenda. However, I asked the council to table those two items, even though it's just one item on the agenda, until the chief gets back next month so he can discuss that or answer any questions that the council may have.
After that, we moved on to new business. These are just first readings, kind of introducing the topic to council so they can take action on it at a later meeting. First was consider appointments to the TERs Board.
We have since 2013 established a tax increment reinvestment zone. And in order to run that kind of operation, you need to have a board, which is appointed by the mayor and approved by council. In that board, we have the mayor as a chair. We have Chuck Franks, who was appointed by the county, and two residents of the Willis area, Charlie Patrick and Duana Riedel. And it was time to renew those appointments and they all were contacted and have asked to be reappointed. So council approved those. That board doesn't meet that often. We have only met two or three times. I gather that the more, we see more development in the area, we will be meeting more because this actually is a funding mechanism to fund some of the infrastructure in the areas that is undeveloped.
And then moving on from that, we went to considering and approving a resolution supporting the Montgomery County thoroughfare plan.
Last week, at the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, I met with County Judge Doyle and he asked me if we would be interested in supporting the county through a resolution regarding the mobility thoroughfare plan. This thoroughfare plan is, and the resolution basically is to provide support for funding of these collector roads and thoroughfare roads through H.G.A.C., the Houston Galveston Area Council, and to the text on the state funding mechanism. And it actually covers the entire county, Montgomery County. One of the interesting things that I saw on the map, and this, actually, we had several public hearings throughout the county, including one or two public hearings in the North Montgomery County Community Center. One of the roads that we had there goes from North New Danville, basically on the county line up north, all the way down to Springs, as a secondary road, which definitely will help not only alleviate the traffic issues that we have right now, but as a road to if there's any emergencies or hurricanes and stuff like that. And the council approved the resolution.
Yeah, they'd really gone and kind of implemented some ideas that we discussed internally for Willis roads too, so it was great all around pertaining to Willis. After that, moving on, we went to considering and approving the Union Pacific land lease agreement.
You want to get a shot to that? I know you've been working on that one.
Well, sure, I'll do my best. We've had a lot of, our Union Pacific has issues with the recycling center being there. I think that's considered hazardous materials to them, particularly the oil recycling areas. So that's, those have been removed immediately from our public works facility. Tires will be allowed until May. At that point, we'll have to come up with some sort of alternative, either another location, maybe a temporary trailer that, or roll-off container, but that will eventually go away as well. In the meantime, Waste Management has begun picking up oil and other recyclable materials.
Let me give you a little bit of background on this. The city actually has a lease agreement with the Union Pacific, and this is where we have our Public Works Barn, and we store all the equipment and vehicles and other equipment there. Altogether, we have about four acres that we lease from them. We received an email some time back where they needed to reclassify the lease agreement because they were not getting the money that they thought it was due to them based on the increases in the economy. So they wanted to increase it to $17,000 upfront. We were able to work with them and get that increment in three years. And like Zach mentioned, one of the things that we need to do right away was to get rid of the oil recycling area, and probably because it's a hazard material and they were concerned about any kind of accidents that could create and stop the traffic of the railroad. So they actually agreed to have that agreement for three years. In the meantime, I think the city is going to try to move forward and look for another location to have public works as well as the, like Zach mentioned, the tire recycling place.
Right. And I think also, they had initial concerns about trucks parking there. Currently, we have 18-wheelers that are allowed to park there as opposed to driving on residential streets to get to their houses, but they did allow that into the future. And I think that was about it on the Waste Management, unless you had anything else you wanted to add?
No, we actually had in the contract with Waste Management, we have an exclusive agreement with Waste Management, meaning that no other refuse collection provider can come to the city. We have five years, so we just awarded the contract to them, renewed the contract with them. And they do have a recycling program and we will start educating the folks on how to use that program more efficiently.
That was approved. And then moving on, we went to, for council to consider and approve the final plat for the WTB Willis plat, which is located on FM 1097 West.
Okay, this is your area of expertise and you actually worked those two issues, so you got two items to talk about.
Sure, we'll cover the next one as well, which is considering and approving the plat for ANFA, which is just on the opposite side on 1097. These are two plats intersected by the new connector road going from FM 1097 West to Old Montgomery Road. Each of these plats will have three parcels, and our understanding right now is that CVS will be on the southwest corner of the new connector road and 1097. And while it's unofficial, I think ALVIs is most likely going to be on the southeast corner of this intersection. So this, this action by council was just approving the plat changes in order to allow this development, and they were passed.
Both of them were passed unanimously. We'll take one more item and then we'll take a break. We're about halfway through the agenda.
After that, council moved on to approving an interlocal agreement with Montgomery County, Precinct One, for funding the new west side connector, which I just briefly touched on.
Okay, this is the connector that will go from FM 1097 all the way to Old Montgomery in order to alleviate some of the traffic jam that we have on 1097, especially in the morning, coming from the lake, coming east onto I-45. We were very fortunate in talking to the county officials, especially Commissioner Matter, and this was one of the projects that was approved in the last road bond in November. And we got about a million dollars from the county to do this road. So in order for them to reimburse the city after the work is done, we needed to have this interlocal agreement. This is something that is done at all times. We have had several interlocal agreements with the county. All the cities throughout the county have some sort of interlocal agreement with the county, and this was approved. As I mentioned, this is probably halfway through the agenda. We're going to take a break and we'll be right back.
You're listening to The Willis Hour on IRloneStar.com.
SPCA Pet Snap of Montgomery County is a 501(c)(3) all-volunteer-based rescue and adoption organization with a no-kill policy for healthy and adoptable animals. Our goals are fourfold: to rescue and rehabilitate homeless animals; to provide a safe haven for the animals until a suitable adoption or foster care home is found or until they are reunited with their owner; to educate the public about the great need to reduce pet population, which includes the importance of having their pets spayed and neutered; and to further the cause for humane and responsible pet ownership; and to provide a low-cost spay-neuter clinic for people who are unable to afford to spay or neuter their pets otherwise. SPCA Pet Snap of Montgomery County encourages you to think adoption first. You can contact us at www.spcaofmc.com.
Hey, this is Cindy Cochran, and now Conroe can boast of another first. The first morning live talk show, 10 to 11 a.m. Monday through Friday, right here on Lone Star Internet Radio, coming straight out of the fabulous downtown Conroe, Texas. Be the coolest guy at the water cooler, or the most informed break room dweller by listening to the fun side of the news, local, national, infinity, and beyond. The Cindy Cochran Show, you ain't heard nothing yet.
Have a legal question? Are you a resident of Montgomery County? Call 281-645-6344 to talk to a volunteer attorney from the Woodlands Bar Association. We answer the phones on the first Monday of every month at 281-645-6344 from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to provide general legal information and information about legal resources to Montgomery County residents.
You're listening to The Willis Hour on IRloneStar.com.
Zach Goodlander, city manager in the city of Willis, and we are giving you a summary of what happened Tuesday night at the city council meeting. Zach, what's the next item?
The next item on the agenda was approving the certificate of substantial completion for the new FM 1097 East lift station.
As you drive east on FM 1097, we have a new lift station that was funded by the Texas Water Development Board. Anytime you have issues, not issue, construction projects of this nature, once the project is completed and taken by the city, approved by the city, you have to have a substantial completion certificate given to the agency, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And it has to be approved by the council, and that's what we did last night. The council approved it unanimously and will send that forward to TCQ.
Moving on, and this was a full agenda, next was consider and approve a change order, change order number one for the FM 1097 East utility extension project.
If you recall from several months back, we awarded a contract to have utilities provided to the east side of Willis on 1097. It goes all the way to the city limits. We made some changes regarding a lift station location, and by doing that, we were able to save about $52,000, and that deduct was approved last night.
And I think some of that actually is going to get allocated towards extending the water lines too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Next on the agenda was awarding the bid for some of the new street projects in town.
This item was tabled, and I'm just going to caveat that by saying, telling you the same thing I told the council last night. We have more needs than money was available. We're about a million, $200,000 short of funds. We are going out to sell more bonds, issuing more debt to the city in order to take care of this, and we expect to do that within the next 45 to 60 days. So we tabled that with the understanding that we have a letter of intent with the lower bidder in the package, that once we get that money, there will be awarded the contract.
And the next item on the agenda was awarding the bid for the west side connector.
The west side connector, as we talked before, is that portion that goes between FM 1097 and ends up on Old Montgomery Road. The cost of that project will be about $1.1 million and change. We are getting $1 million from the county. That was a project included in the road bond that was approved back in November. And one of the main goals that we have here, and we're working this very hard with the text dot folks, is the fact that we're trying to close down that two-lane feeder that we have right in front of McDonald's. As you turn south on the feeder road to go to I-45, that's a two-way lane there, and that's kind of dangerous. By having this, text dot will actually implement the one-way lane.
Yeah, anyone right now currently coming out of Chick-fil-A trying to head back north or having to kind of avoid that traffic trying to get on the highway right now.
Correct.
And moving on from that, we went to second readings for council to approve. The first and only item on this agenda was consider an ordinance regulating open carry weapons.
This was an item, interesting item. As I have mentioned in the past, any kind of ordinance in the city of Willis requires two readings. This was the second reading. It was approved, but there were some changes to it at, right during the meeting. And the main change was the mayor and some of the council members chose some concern about people carrying concealed weapons into official city meetings, whether it's council meeting, an EDC, CDC, BOA board meetings, planning and zoning. They would like that we post signs saying that no concealed handguns can be carried into City Hall as well as the open carry. That was the only change. If you want, this ordinance will be posted in the next few days in our website, and it becomes effective immediately.
Yep, that was made official. And the next item on the agenda was reports, not only from council, but also city manager report and the city engineers' report.
The city engineer didn't have too much to report last night, other than the projects are pretty much completed. We're making progress on the portion between I-45 and FM 75 and 1097. Text dot is coming to do the actual paving, starting in March 11th.
I think so, yeah, that's right.
And I think by the end of December, we hope to have that open and ready to go. In my report, the only thing I mentioned to the council is that trash half, which is one major event that we have in the city, will be held on April 9th. And we do have some flyers circulating through the area, and we will also have that on the website.
Yeah, that's a great event. That's for city of Willis residents to bring any large trash items. They aren't regularly allowed to put in their normal trash pickups, and that's an all-day event. It'll be on a Saturday.
That pretty much concludes the summary that we have of the meeting that took place on Tuesday night. I want to invite the public to come and visit with us every third Tuesday at 5:30. And you can always contact any one of us at 856-4611 with any questions, concerns, comments that you have about the operation of running a city. Zach, I appreciate you being here today, and we'll see you next time.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
You're listening to The Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio.
I'm Lieutenant Bob Berry with the Conroe Police Department, reminding you that drinking and driving do not mix. Drinking and driving causes an alcohol-related fatality every hour in the United States. Stay sober and stay alive.
Tune in every Sunday night right here on Lone Star Internet Radio for adventure, romance, thrills, chills, and everything vintage radio drama can bring. The Players Theater Company Old Time Radio Hour comes to you every Sunday at 7:00 p.m. with brand-new episodes monthly. Our productions always feature actors, music, and sound effects performed completely live. And now you can enjoy seeing each new episode performed onstage at the Owen Theater in Conroe. Check out www.IRLoneStar.com for information about upcoming episodes. Relive the glory days of vintage radio drama right here with the Players Theater Company Old Time Radio Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio.
Have a legal question? Are you a resident of Montgomery County? Call 281-645-6344 to talk to a volunteer attorney from the Woodlands Bar Association. We answer the phones on the first Monday of every month at 281-645-6344 from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to provide general legal information and information about legal resources to Montgomery County residents.
You're listening to The Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio.
Thanks for listening here to The Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio. I'm Lauren Swonk, and I'm with 1097 Willis Monthly News. So excited to be here with you today, catching up on all things Willis and participating in this program is always a lot of fun for us as the community newspaper in Willis. And so today, I'm excited because we get to be with you and share a little bit about what's going on in the community, and also catch up with our friend Lee Rushing. He is with ProVantage Inspections, and so it's always a pleasure to visit with you, Lee. Thanks for being here today.
It's great to be back, Lauren.
I'm excited to be able to talk about public enemy number one for your home. And it's springtime, and we're going to be catching up on some events that are coming up in Willis, but before we do, I would like, Lee, if you will, just tell us a little bit about yourself. I know you've been here on the program before, but for those that maybe didn't catch the last one, if you will, tell a little bit about yourself and about ProVantage.
Great, great. Thanks, Lauren. I'm the owner of ProVantage Inspections, a professional real estate inspection company here in the area. Travel all over the Houston area, but try to concentrate up here in the Montgomery County area. We do real estate inspections for people selling and buying their homes and looking at other properties, and we do a host of other related issues as well. And appreciate the opportunity just to write an article for the community to encourage them on a monthly tip that comes out in the 1097 newspaper. It's great to do. Thanks.
Well, we appreciate it. I think it's a real benefit to our readers, and that article is called "An Inspector's Guide to Caring for Your Home." And so each month, Lee tackles a different issue or a different topic. And so this month, the topic is public enemy number one, and that is moisture. And so as our listeners today, maybe they're getting ready to get their homes kind of ready for the spring, clean it up after the fall. Just last weekend, I was telling my husband, we stepped out in the backyard, and I said, "We really need a workday in the backyard," and just getting those leaves cleared out and, you know, all the underbrush and that type of thing. So if you will, talk about that public enemy number one.
Well, a lot of people don't really think about all the different places that moisture can penetrate a home, and it's not just the moisture penetration, it's moisture creation in a home also. Moisture is all over our house. And just to start out with one, excuse me, area of moisture is the exterior. Everything on the exterior is designed not just to look pretty or to look nice, but to be functional, and it's to shed the water away from the house. Here we've, here we're, we've just had all the leaves and needles and stuff like that fall from our trees, and if you drive around the area, you'll see a lot of roofs where you can't see a whole lot of the roof. Those roofs need to be cleaned because that debris, those leaves, those needles, will retain moisture, and when you remove it, you'll see how wet actually the valleys are on the roofs. And those are points of penetration. If the moisture stays there, it's got to go someplace, and oftentimes, it'll seep into the decking on the roof, and then it could drip, and it can cause damage, and it causes deterioration and rot in your house, in your structure. Needs to be cleaned.
What about, you know, one of the things that I've noticed in our home, after showers, after, you know, somebody's been using the hot water in the bathroom, that bathroom is like, just, it is sweaty, if you will.
Yeah, you're right.
Very, very moist. So what is your recommendation even for that, in that particular situation?
Well, houses are to be, you're to have an exhaust fan in every area where there's moisture creation, bathrooms and utility room. In older homes, growing open house, we didn't have exhaust fans in our bathrooms. In fact, I would love to turn the hot water up as hot as I could for a shower, run all the hot water out of the water heater, and that bathroom, everything in there was dripping, it was so wet. That's not good. It was fun and enjoyable as a teenager, but for your house, for the paint on the wall, for the cabinets, it's not good. And so now, we put exhaust fans to take the moisture out. Many of those exhaust fans are actually just vented into the attic, so you're sending the moisture into the attic. It's to be vented outside. If a person in their bathroom does not have exhaust fans, I would recommend having them installed in there. And then use it when you're taking a shower, when you've got hot water running.
For sure. Well, you know, and I think, one thing that I really appreciate about Lee, and I think it shows through his article each month, is I think you're a very thorough guy, Lee. And so when you go in and you get ready to inspect, I know we've talked about this before, but typically, you know, when someone thinks about an inspection or having their home inspected, they would think, well, you do that when you're getting ready to sell. It's a requirement. But other than that, you know, what are situations where someone might call on your services, you know, specifically maybe for the case of moisture issues in their home, or preparing for the spring, getting ready for a new season?
Well, I had a friend of mine write me here just recently after the hailstorm up here in the area. He, over in Tomball, he got a new roof on his house, and it was leaking already, brand-new roof.
Oh, no.
And so he wanted somebody, a third-party company, to come out and look at it, to see where they could find any points of penetration, and then be able to report back. And he wanted that, something credible to be able to take back to the company that had provided the new roof. Sadly, he was having a little bit of a problem with the company that put the roof on, and he needed something, he needed an inspector to come in and take a look at that. That's just, that's just one way. Another way that I'd really recommend to people, for people who've been living in their home for a long period of time, it's real easy to let some things slide, the electrical service panel, which we wrote about in December, and there's other areas. Just have somebody come in, in the same way that we go to a doctor for a general checkup, have an inspector come to your house and do a general checkup on your house. And there's a lot of nuts and bolts that need to be tightened and reinstalled. There are screws in your electrical panel that probably need to be adjusted, some wires, maybe a breaker that needs to be done, all sorts of little bitty things, and it needs a good checkup.
Yeah, that makes sense. Well, I just, I think Lee's a great guy to call on in those situations. Again, he's the owner of ProVantage Inspections, and we're talking all about Willis here on The Willis Hour. And so just, so you know, Lee is out of the Willis-Lake-Conroe area and is familiar with the area, but he works all over the greater Houston area. And so for our listeners today, that's one of the advantages of Lone Star Radio and the internet option there is that you guys that are listening in from anywhere in the greater Houston area, I encourage you to give Lee a call with ProVantage Inspections because he's definitely going to be able to provide a great service to you. And then for our readers, the readers of 1097, be sure to go check out his article. It's called "An Inspector's Guide to Caring for Your Home." We also have it each month on our website at 1097.net. We have the Uh, we have the current article there each month. And so this month, we're talking about moisture. Just a little bit of a sneak peek into the March issue. We'll be kind of continuing that, talking about peaks and valleys. And, um, so I think it's going to be a, a great article. Lee, we'll jump back in here in just a few moments, but let's talk a little bit about some things that are going on in the Willis community before we go to break. Um, you know, it's, it's, we've had some gorgeous weather, uh, the last few days. And so here we are, uh, coming to the, you know, nearly the end of February, if it's, if it's, you know, if you can believe it. And this month is Black History Month. And so you might just be, uh, thinking about that. And maybe you're listening in today and you caught the article about Tolliver Church of God and Christ. They're going to be hosting their Black History Program. It's actually their second year to host this program. And according to, um, uh, just a, a great lady there that's leading up the program, Sonda Tolliver, it's going to be even better than last year. And so the program's going to include a wax museum that's going to be put on by the youth of their church, um, as well as of course, a, a service that's going to be full of dancing and singing and just a variety of programs. And then also a museum of, uh, African-American inventors. And so I think this would be a great program. If you're looking for something interesting to participate in and to be a part of, it's actually this Friday night, February nineteenth at six-thirty. Again, that's at, uh, Tolliver Church of God and Christ in Willis. And that's over at, let me pull up their address here. It's one hundred North Shirley Lane in Willis. And again, that's Tolliver Church of God in Christ. It's their Black History Program. And there's more about it in this month's issue of Ten-Ninety-Seven. You can go online and find it at ten-ninety-seven.net. And that's just one event. This weekend's going to be a busy weekend in the community. Uh, many people are going to be participating in. Also, the farmer's market we'll be sharing about here in just a few minutes. Maybe you're listening and you said, hey, did she just say farmer's market? Yes, I did. We're going to tell you a little bit more about it after the break. Um, but that's happening as well as some state participation by many of Willis High School students, um, in wrestling. And we've just sent two divers to state. And so there's just a lot going on in the community, lots of exciting and positive things and some neat things for you guys to participate in that are listening in today. And so we've got Lee Rushing here with us with ProVantage Inspections. We'll be back here shortly. And we're so glad to be with you here on the Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio.
You're listening to the Willis Hour on irlonestar.com.
Heaven's Army of Resources and Recreation Center is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization featuring a ten-thousand-square-foot building located at one-nine-three-two-five-FM-fourteen-eight-five-West, New Caney, Texas. At Heaven's Army, we offer over twenty-six different services free for all ages, from karate, dance, drug and alcohol classes, anger management, parenting, food and clothing pantries, to just name a few. We are supported solely by volunteers and private donations. Our main mission is to glorify God in all that we do. At Heaven's Army, we strive to be a hand up, not a handout. Come check us out at one-nine-three-two-five-FM-fourteen-eight-five-West, New Caney, Texas, or call for more information at two-eight-one-six-eight-nine-five-eight-six-four. You may also learn more about Heaven's Army by visiting our website at heavensarmyofresources.com.
Lone Star Internet Radio is now bringing you the Weekly Business Hour Show each Monday morning at eleven AM. My name is Rick Schissler and I will be your host. Each week, we will be bringing you local, area, and national business news that you can use. The program will also feature an interview with a local or national businessperson who will share their own experiences, successes, and failures in operating their businesses. Our show is for anyone who already owns a business, whether they work solo or have employees, and for those who are thinking about starting their own businesses. A bit of information about myself. Again, my name is Rick Schissler and I am a Silver Fox advisor who has over forty years' experience as a serial entrepreneur. As a part of our show, I will offer some advice and encouragement on our monthly topic. And I will take your questions by email at rschissler@silverfox.org or call into the station at nine-three-six-six-four-seven-three-seven-seven-six. See you on the radio Monday at eleven AM for the Weekly Business Hour.
Are you interested in learning more about preparing quick, healthy, and safe meals for your family? Would you like to spend time with others learning tips and tricks along with practicing and tasting nutritious food? If so, the On the Road to Healthy Living Mobile Cooking School is for you. Call Amy Wrestler at Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service at nine-three-six-five-three-nine-seven-eight-two-five to find a class near you or volunteer to host a class.
You're listening to the Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio.
Welcome back here to the Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio. Again, I'm Lauren Swonky and I'm with Ten-Ninety-Seven Willis Monthly News. We're your community newspaper in Willis and it's always a pleasure to be here with you and to follow up our friends with the city of Willis. So excited to be able to join you today. I know that, uh, Mr. Forrest Steer and Zach, they were in today sharing with you about kind of a wrap-up of the city council meeting this week. And so I, I'm glad to be here today and to have with me Lee Rushing of ProVantage Inspections. Hey, Lee.
Hey, good, uh, morning, Lauren.
Good morning. I'm glad that you're here today. And we've been talking about, um, caring for your home and taking care of business. And, you know, while we're talking about taking care of business, it's election season. And, you know, for we free Americans to be able to vote, that's an important responsibility.
Sure is.
It sure is. And so for our listeners today, I just want to encourage you, um, early voting has started and it cranked up on February sixteenth, of course, this past Tuesday. It's going to last all through next week. It ends on February twenty-sixth. And then I encourage you to get out there and, and get it done. I feel always a little bit of, um, pressure, like as soon as it starts, especially this time, because there are several spots that I need to do a little more research on before I make a decision. Um, once early voting starts, I start to kind of feel like, I gotta go get it done. I'll think of it and I'm like, I got to go do that. Do you feel that way, Lee?
Yeah, I sure do. I keep putting it on the calendar to get it done and, uh, I'll, I'll probably wait till the last day of early voting.
Yeah, you know, that's one of the benefits of early voting. We were just talking about the history of that and kind of thinking about, um, you know, that extra opportunity to have those two weeks to get out and get it done. Um, so I encourage you, you know, don't put it off. There are days when it's open late into the evening. And so I just encourage you to go onto the voter site online, Montgomery County Voter's site. It has all of the listings of locations where you need to go. I know that many of our listeners today, you might be from Willis. And so you might go vote at the North Montgomery County Community Center. Maybe you're from the Woodlands though, and you're saying, oh, my gosh, another reminder, I've got to get that done. Where do I go? Um, I encourage you, go online, look up the Montgomery County Voter Registrar's site. Of course, they're going to have a listing of all of the voting locations as well as all the open times to go and get that done. Um, and so I just encourage you, go get it done. It's so important. And if you wait, if you miss early voting, that's okay because voting day officially is on March first. And there's a lot of big decisions to make, isn't there? This...
There sure are some important elections.
There are. Yeah, absolutely. I, um, I, um, I am thankful for one thing through this time that at least in the Republican primary for president, the field has narrowed a little bit. And so, you know, there are not quite as many decisions to be made there. I know when it first started, I kind of felt like, wow, there are so many candidates. And there were several that I felt like were, were good contenders.
Yeah.
Um, but now the na- the field has narrowed a little bit and maybe you've kind of started to decide on who you're going to vote for. I just encourage you to get out there and do it.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Um, now then, speaking of voting, I do encourage you and kind of tying back to the paper, be sure to pick up this month's copy of Ten-Ninety-Seven. We have a full listing of those candidates for Constable Precinct One, um, that I think you guys should go and check out their reasons for running, what they believe are the greatest issues that are facing Precinct One. Um, of course, that covers Willis and also Montgomery. So if you're listening today from Willis or Montgomery, I think those are super important, that's a super important election as, uh, our current Constable Donald Chumley is retiring after many, many years of service. Um, I think it's a really important election to look into and to, to make an educated decision. Um, so be sure to go and, and check that out. It's in the February issue of Ten-Ninety-Seven. Or you can visit our website. It's also, uh, listed there. And so to get a good idea of which candidate you want to vote for, be sure to find that and to read that information, to research it out and to pick the one that you believe will fill that role in the best way. And so that's a little bit about the election season. Uh, Lee and I were just talking here about the farmer's market in Willis. Lee, are you a farmer's market shopper?
I've never been to it, so I'm anxious to go. Yeah, when I hear about it this Friday, I, I want to, I want to carve out some time to go over there.
Yeah, it's a neat, a really neat event. Um, of course, they've got your fresh produce. Um, but they've got a little bit of everything. It's really kind of an interesting, uh, assortment of wares from local artisans, even, even beyond, you know, when I think of a farmer's market, I usually think of, you know, produce, your vegetables, your fruit, that kind of thing. But they have a little bit of everything. They've got, I know, um, they have local, they've had local honey. They had, uh, worm, I'm going to probably mess this up, but worm castings, I believe is what it is for fertilizing, um, organic fertilizing. And so they just have a variety of items. And it's always good to support your local, uh, vendors. And so we encourage folks to go out there. That's the farmer's market. That's this Friday from one to six. And it's next door to Montgomery County Milling in Willis, right there near the city hall. If you go to city hall and you look around, you'll see it. It's right there. Um, go out and support those local vendors, those local farmers and artisans at the farmer's market in Willis. Um, now, Lee, again, tell us a little bit about anything we can do to care for our home this spring. Things that you think are important looking into a new season as the heat is coming. Um, you know, it's hard to believe as we've had weather in the seventies this week and dropping down into the forties to think that, you know, that hundred, hundred is coming. And, um, so tell us maybe some things that we can do to prepare for the summer.
Well, there's a lot of folks that, uh, are probably fixing to go to the, uh, the, the garden shop and get a bunch of plants and mulch and things like that to go and spruce up the front and the back of their house. And one thing I want to really encourage them to do related to the moisture issue is don't pack it too high, uh, or pile it too high. Uh, you want to keep the, uh, the, the grating around your foundation to where you can see four to six inches of your slab. If you, uh, it's commonly done where people will come in and they'll put lots of mulch up and it'll be over the weep holes. It'll be over the foundation edge. And that'll keep moisture there on that part of the foundation, the part of the sill plate. And, uh, that'll cause, um, uh, rotting deterioration on that sill plate. It also is an environment for wood destroying insects, for other, for other things to get inside the weep holes and inside your house and, uh, that you don't want in there. And so you got to keep that lowered. So I really encourage that. And when you drive around the area, it's amazing how many people in their gutters, uh, they're not just growing trees and plants, uh, in their yard. They're growing plants and trees on their roof and in their gutters. And if you got trees growing in your gutters, it's time to clean them out so that, uh, the April showers, uh, can flow away from your house and, uh, evacuate, uh, and be properly shed. So, yeah, clean your gutters out. It's dangerous. If your roof and your gutters are too high or too steep, hire somebody to come out there and do it. Uh, the money that you'll spend to do that, um, is a good investment on just the maintenance of your home.
For sure. Absolutely. Well, I appreciate that. You know, I think, um, so often it, it, it does take to, until that time of getting ready to sell to take care of business. And in this month's article, you mentioned, um, inspecting a home where you could tell that the homeowner preparing for the sale of the home had cleaned away the debris and it caught, it created a problem.
Well, in, in fact, the people that were buying the house had said that the roof, you could hardly see the roof when they first went out and looked at it. And, uh, when I went to inspect it, it had obviously just been cleaned. The gutters had been cleaned. And there were literal holes in the composition shingles down to the decking. Uh, and the decking was rotten, uh, in three places at least, in the front and the back. And, uh, and the, because of the age of the roof and the roof had not been cleaned, uh, it was deteriorated. And as a result, the people selling the house, uh, had to decide whether or not that they were going to come down on the price of the house to accommodate a whole new roof, uh, for the house or prov- do it before they sold it, uh, to the couple or take money off of the price, uh, for the couple buying it. And that's a lot of money. And, uh, uh, some of that could have been avoided if they had kept it clean during the time that they lived there.
You know, those are hard things. It's like your annual checkup with the doctor. You don't really want to do it. But ultimately it can save you in the end.
Uh, that's right. Yeah, pay me now or pay me later.
That's exactly right. Well, I just, I think that Lee's got a lot of great perspective on taking care of your home and, um, saving money in the long run. And so I just encourage you guys to be sure to read his article. It's at ten-ninety-seven.net or also to pick up a copy of Ten-Ninety-Seven anywhere throughout the Willis community and read his article. It's called An Inspector's Guide to Caring for Your Home. Again, he's with ProVantage Inspections and he's right out of the Willis area, but also works all over the greater Houston area. So maybe you're listening in, you know, uh, north of us, maybe you're listening down south. Um, you can always give Lee a call and check in for his services with ProVantage Inspections. You know, I, I tell you, as we're preparing for the summer, thinking about HVAC, tell us what we can do to kind of take care of that in, in preparing for the, the warmer temperatures.
Great question, Lauren. Um, as, as the warmer temperatures come on, I've already turned my air conditioner on this month a couple of times. And, uh, when you do, you've got to make sure that your, your drain lines, there's two drain lines or two, two drain areas, areas on an, uh, air conditioner, the evaporator core, which is usually in a person's attic. Uh, there's drain lines that go to sometimes the plumbing in the house. Uh, it may be connected to a sink in a bathroom. Uh, it may be going outside. Um, but those drain lines need to be kept clean. And it's a good idea just to periodically go up with a, a cup of bleach uh, and pour it into that PVC pipe generally up in the attic where the evaporator core is. And that'll help to clean out the, the mold and anything that may be accumulated in there. Those drains need to be kept clean, just like your, uh, your sink and your kitchen drains need to be cleaned out. And so, uh, that, that's a periodic maintenance. So before the syst- before the year cranks up with heat, um, if you're not, uh, acquainted with how to do it yourself, have an air conditioning guy come out and just do a checkup on your system. And they'll check those drain lines also. Ask them to make sure that they check those drain lines. And then the secondary drain line also, uh, into the overflow pan, uh, you want to make sure that, uh, all of those, um, pipes are cleaned out. Uh, because if the water create, an evac- an evaporator system on an air conditioning system, people don't realize it, when it's running, it's creating about a gallon of water an hour.
Wow.
That water's got to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, you don't want it to go, i- if, if your drains are clogged up, which mine was at my house a couple of years ago, as it turned out, um, we actually had a whole piece of sheet rock, four feet by eight feet in our, one of our bedrooms that, uh, cratered because of the moisture that was, uh, soaking up in the insulation and on top of that. And we had a four-foot by eight-foot hole because of a drain line that had clogged up.
Yeah.
And so, uh, you got to, you got to keep on top of it. Happens to all of us.
Yes, sir. Homeownership, it's a big responsibility.
Yeah, the all-American dream.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, it's been a pleasure to be with you today here, Lee. Thank you for joining me again on the Willis Hour.
It's great to be here.
Yes, sir. Well, listen, I'm so glad you guys have tuned in here on the Willis Hour and I hope that you'll join us again next month. I want to wish all of our wrestlers that are headed to the state competition in Katy this weekend, our best wishes from Ten-Ninety-Seven and all of your friends here. I believe we've got six students who are headed to state. And I tell you, those are some good kids and they're hard-working kids. So we're real proud of them. And then also to those two divers we have that have, uh, recently qualified for state, we're super proud of them. You know, those are unique sports. Everybody can rally around football in the fall, but I want to encourage our listeners today to give those kids a pat on the back if you see them around the community. And if you see them on Facebook, you know, if you've liked the Willis ISD Athletics page, be sure to cheer them on because they've worked really hard for those accomplishments. Again, thanks for listening here to Ten-Ninety-Seven on Lone Star Internet Radio. It's always a pleasure on the Willis Hour.
Thank you for checking out a podcast on Lone Star Internet Radio. Lone Star Internet Radio is Montgomery County's community radio station, broadcasting from the heart of Conroe, Texas. If you're interested in sponsoring a program for Lone Star Internet Radio, just visit us online at irlonestar.com or message us on Facebook. We are always taking song requests on Twitter. And if you are interested in getting involved with the station by either hosting your own show or if you want to be a DJ, just contact Dick, at dick@irlonestar.com. Lone Star Internet Radio, Montgomery County's community radio station.